Well, your time is done. Please stand and join the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I will call this regular school board meeting of Independent School District 544 to order. And the first item of business will be to establish our forum. Kirby Anderson.
Here.
Natalie Knudsen.
Here.
Melanie Cole.
Present.
Matthew Lemke. Ms. Hermes present. Steven Biggessa.
Here.
We have a forum. Thank you. I will seek a motion to approve the agenda which is before us. We'll come and have that motion.
So good.
And a second?
A second.
All right, any discussion on the agenda? All in favor of approving say aye. Aye. Of course, say nay. All right, thank you, and we'll move on. And tonight, our guest is Mary Weaver, who is here to present the American Indian Parent Advisory Vote. So, um, welcome, Mary.
Thank you. The American Indian Parent Advisory Committee had recently met.
It's just a little more.
Sure. I am sure.
I just attorney thing.
Don't hear?
Yeah.
Okay, we're just gonna make a little scene here.
It's okay, we noticed. We've probably seen already.
What is that thing, that number four if it's not?
I think it's a tilt.
Yeah.
You were going, I mean.
Do you think so? Cause I'm gonna like, it's so much bigger there.
Yeah, don't have a worker's comp thing in. In front of everybody.
That did you get the law?
No, but not, I can see, I can see.
Okay, okay.
So, the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee recently met, and we reviewed whether or not that the district was in compliance with the requests of the Minnesota American Indian Education Association for the grant that they have received. Sorry, my son is calling me, I'm telling you no. So, I would like to read the statement that the AIPAC concurs that the school board and district are compliant with Minnesota Statute, Section 124D, Point 78, and that the school board and district are meeting the needs of American Indian students. We also have the, I'm not even sure what it's called, the paper that you guys need to submit to this that I'm supposed to give to you.
All right, thank you.
And I am a parent of an American Indian student. She's in ninth grade, and I'm very happy that there are things like this for her available. I have lots of ideas, and I've talked with Sarah Campa about those. So, you'll be hearing more from us and looking at different things, such as potentially doing like a land acknowledgement, three, four events at the school, so that we can recognize the people who were here before we came. Bringing in different things like Anton Trower, who's coming in, in a week or so.
March tenth, I think.
Pardon?
Is it March tenth or?
Yeah, I think it's like the tenth and eleventh or something. Ninth, tenth, somewhere in there. Unfortunately, my daughter's gonna have surgery, so she's not gonna be there, but we're gonna try and get her over here anyway. And then also, other like American Indian artists and things like that, so that we can really celebrate the culture and, and, and help these students feel proud of where they came from. So, if there's any questions, I'm more than happy to try and answer.
I wanna thank you for your involvement on the committee. It's so vital, and it really becomes difficult to find people who wanna engage in, in extra activities like that.
Yes.
So, and the fact that you have a lot of enthusiasm is.
I told Sarah I have all the ideas as long as she enacts them.
Ideas are good.
She's like, that works for me.
Ideas are wonderful.
Right, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
The declaration signed and moved on across the scene, all right. And next, we'll have a board report from Scott Kolbeck, elementary principal at Adams McKinley. Good evening.
Good evening. Just a number of things I'd like to update you on. Something that we're excited about at Adams School and McKinley is we have, we're gonna kick off an event on Wednesday of this week called One School, One Book. This is something that we have done in the past, although every year, there's been something that has just kind of interrupted it. Whether it was two years ago, when we, we started a book, and then we couldn't have school anymore, and then last year, we, we did this event, One School, One Book, but we couldn't bring everybody together into the same room to have a large kickoff event. So, we're excited about, on Wednesday, we're gonna bring all of our first, first graders together, and then we're gonna bring our second graders together at Adams School. So, One School, One Book is this. We, thanks to our parent-teacher organization, they purchase a book for every first and second grader, plus another book for every classroom. The book this year that was selected by, by our staff is The Mouse and the Motorcycle by renowned children's author Beverly Cleary. So, the idea behind this is, there is a month, we, we read this book over the course of a month, and the kids bring the book home. We encourage mom, or dad, or somebody in the family to read the chapter to their child. Then the next day, the student brings the book to school, and then the teacher reads the same chapter that was read to them, hopefully, the night before. The teacher reads the same chapter then to their students. We have all kinds of fun activities planned. There are trivia questions that are read over the morning announcements, and the kids can try to answer those questions, put their answers into a basket, and then their name could be drawn for some prizes. I'd like to recognize, so, a number of people that are kind of behind this effort. Jeremy Knick, he's a, this year's a second grade teacher at Adams School. He kind of leads this thing. And this is the fourth now year that we've been doing something like this. Mike Evavold, he's, he's kind of like the voice, right? So, the kids will come into the cafeteria, and Mr. Evavold will read the first chapter on Wednesday. That's the big kickoff. Some people that have been doing some behind-the-scenes work, though, to make this a very memorable experience is Sarah Van Earp and Pam Sherman. So, thank you to all of them. There were boxes wrapped, delivered to all fourteen classrooms today, but the kids still don't know what's in the specially wrapped package. So, Wednesday's the big reveal. The, the box will finally be opened, and the kids will see that they have their book. They'll come down to the cafeteria and we'll do the kickoff. There's a student today that was certain that they saw the box in their classroom today moving. So, they have no idea what's in the box. Hopefully, they won't be disappointed, right? When they open it up, and it's a book and not a puppy, or something like that. So, that's One School, One Book. There will, actually, this week, in the Daily Journal, there will be an article explaining One School, One Book. All right, so moving on. As part of the district's strategic plan, there was some set aside money to go out and try to find a local artist to come into the schools and work with our elementary kids. And Sarah Ranovic, who's very well-known in these parts in the, in the art community, she has visited every second grade classroom, and now every first grade classroom. And with the second graders, she taught a watercolor lesson. And with the first graders, they use tempera paints. She's really good. Had a chance to drop into about three or four of her different classrooms and just observe, getting really good reviews and high praise from the classroom teachers, and the kids have really produced some really nice things. She spent an hour in each classroom with them. So, now, we'll be visiting with her to see what grade level would you like to tackle next? Third grade or kindergarten? So, she's done second and then first. So, we're just really pleased with that. And we thank Sarah for her good work with our students. Teachers who have had Sarah's children in their classrooms in the past have brought Sarah in as a, as a parent volunteer to have her teach lessons to, to their classrooms. So, we, we knew about her. Third thing I'd like to just mention is kindergarten registration is coming up Monday, March twenty-eighth. So, I guess a month from, a month from tonight. So, kindergarten registration will be, well, it's been two years since we've been able to hold kindergarten registration in the McKinley Gymnasium. That'll be from five to six. A special thank you to McKinley Secretary Michelle Carlson, who does so much work in getting our mailings ready. Mailings are gonna go out this week. And when parents receive those mailings, they can start registering their child now electronically. They can do it online. This is going to be, I think, year three of that. So, we've been able to make some improvements to that process each and every year. And then, two other items just I wanna mention. So, again, this is just maybe another example of, hopefully, life getting a little bit back to normal. We're hoping to hold an Adams School Book Fair in April, April seventh. And we had a book fair all ready to go about two years ago this time, and we were gonna have it, and we had a jungle theme ready to go, and then school was shut down, March, April, May, so we couldn't have our book fair. So, we have resurrected the jungle theme. And Pam Sherman, a second grade teacher, is in charge of the book fair. And watch out and be careful, because if you put her in charge of something, it's gonna be really well-done. And she just gets all of the Adams staff involved in that. So, we're looking forward to that. And lastly, again, thank you to our parent-teacher organization. Our first and second grade students this spring will be heading over to Wapton to go to the Wapton Zoo. We're gonna send first graders one day, second graders a different day. We're gonna go either May seventeen, eighteen, or nineteen. We're gonna go two out of those three days. So, we have our buses ordered, and we're planning that. We're looking forward to that. So, just another example of our, how our parent-teacher organization supports our, our elementary students in classrooms. So, we're really appreciative of them. So, that's my report for this evening. I can entertain any questions from the board.
So, Scott, with Sarah Ranovic, did she, did she just do one class period each, for each classroom? And then, is there any plan to have her return for more, for the same second grade and first grade instead of the other grades?
So, that's our hope, right? We're taking this a grade level at a time. So, she, I just kind of put it out there to her, which grade level would you like to start? We have K through four. She chose second. When she was done with second, I said, okay, can we have you back? Third grade or first grade? She said, let's go with first grade. So, now, I actually emailed her today, cause she just finished first grade last week. Emailed her today and said, okay, hopefully, you're ready. And up for round three, do you want third grade or kindergarten? And I included Mrs. Rund in that email, because if Sarah would like to tackle the third grade, then she would work with Mrs. Rund and schedule that. Yep, so it's, it's been an hour. So, our second graders, first graders, they've all spent an hour with her. Our hope is that she's gonna wanna get through every grade level, K through four, and then come back for round two, I guess.
And then, like, how much were the, cause before, the art, the art program was kind of handled by the classroom teachers, right?
And it still is.
They still do that as well?
So, we're just looking at this as kind of a bonus. A bonus experience.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Principal Kolbeck? Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, we'll hear from Principal Kenny Rund, our Cleveland Elementary Principal.
Good evening. Just last week, we had another excellent round of parent-teacher conferences. And this year, we had held them in February, whereas typically, we've had them in March. And at the elementary level, we found that February is like a really great time to meet with parents and talk about their child's growth and progress, and also areas for continued growth. So, great round of conferences. We're always happy to present the number. We have ninety-four percent of families attend conferences, either in person or virtually. And teachers kept track of how many virtual or phone calls, conferences that they had, and there were forty-seven. Otherwise, the rest of them were in person. So, it was really, we're pleased with that participation. And we had a book fair in association with our parent-teacher conferences, and that's always just a positive draw to get families to come into school, spend a little time, linger, find some good books, visit the RTI Room, the Title Room, the ESL Room, and it was really nice to see families just be present and check things out. And then, in February, we typically have our, our Friendship Fridays in February. This year, we only had two Fridays that we were in school during the month of February. But one day, the kids were all decked out in their pajamas, and the next day, they were decked out in their hats. So, we are like, we, we talk a lot about friendships and relationships and sharing friends, and how our circle of friends grows and grows and grows over our lifetimes. So, that, that's one way that we're celebrating some of those skills that we're, we're learning and practicing every day. This week, Ms. Yegi will be visiting classrooms, and she's covering topics regarding social dynamics, problem-solving with some friendship conflicts, sharing friends, and also avoiding assumptions. You don't always have to jump to the conclusion before you have all your facts. So, those are some of the things that they're gonna be talking about this coming week. Also, Ms. Yegi's facilitating a grief group. And we, it's been a couple of years since we've been able to have LB Homes and a bereavement counselor come into school and work with students. This year, we're able to do that. That's gonna start on March ninth, and will be five sessions concluding on April sixth. So, students who have experienced the loss of a loved one recently or not so recently are invited to participate in this group. There was information that went home to, to children's parents, and so then the parents were able to make contact. So, we're, we're glad to be able to provide that, and that's in conjunction with LB Hospice and Camp McKinley. And then, the other thing that I'm kind of excited about is we're gonna have our organic food kickoff tomorrow. And we're partnering with Otter Tail County Human, Art, Human Waste, Solid Waste Department. Doing food organics. To be clear on that. But Sarah Walters is our, our recycling champion in our community, and she's coming to school tomorrow morning and is gonna provide some mini in-services for the students, so they know what the recycling table is all about, what they're going to be expected to do as they're dumping their tray. And through this process, I'm just really excited that they're learning some of those life skills and what they're learning at school. They're hopefully gonna take home and, and teach their family members about the importance of recycling, and then what organic recycling is all about as well. And I'm just gonna share a couple staggering facts tonight that, that the students are gonna be learning here as soon as tomorrow. But organic food scraps and other compost, compostable matter makes up twenty-five to thirty percent of our waste stream in our recycle, recycling. Every year in the United States, almost forty percent of food that is produced goes uneaten, which is just amazing to me. Ninety-five percent of that food goes straight into the landfills, where it does not, compost is likely, or it gives off different gases that are not helpful. Wasted food is excessive, expensive, and environmentally harmful, such that it costs our nation one hundred and sixty-six billion dollars every year, which amounts to about fifteen hundred dollars a year for a family of four. And then, we're feeding our landfills almost as much as we feed ourselves, while there's one in eight Americans that are food insecure. And so, when you really kind of study it and dig deeper, these are the facts that are being presented to us. So, we can all do our part and keep our food out of the waste and do our part in recycling. So, the students are gonna be learning some, some valuable information. In our district, Cleveland's participating. Kennedy Secondary School's participating, and also the Area Learning Center, and then other organizations in our community and across our county. So, good things are happening in that department. And then, Scott was talking about One Book, One School, and Cleveland is learning from Adams. So, we're, we've been taking notes and wanting to do this ourselves. And so, just last week, we, teachers decided on the book Clementine by Sarah Penny Packer. And it's a fun little read. I sat down one Saturday morning and just enjoyed the book Clementine myself. But we placed our order, so we're anxious for the books to arrive at, at Cleveland. And we have teachers working together to develop activities and kind of map that out. So, I anticipate we'll be doing, reading the book Clementine as a school at the end of March. And then, thanks to our Otter PTO, they use the, the funds that are generated from the Booster Fund fundraiser each spring to support STEAM activities, literacy, and then other educational opportunities for students. And the PTO's working on a STEAM activity for third and fourth graders that's, that's scheduled to take place at May fifth and sixth at the Community Arena. And so, I think it'll, it will definitely span two days. So, each class will have an opportunity to go to this activity and experience some, some really neat things. And then, this Thursday, we're already meeting with Booster Fund people again to plan this year's event. So, we're excited to hear what their theme is. They develop, they include character education with their program. And then, we're gonna be running on the Kennedy Secondary School track again this spring on May twenty-fourth. So, a big thank you to our Otter PTO. They also brought in a wonderful spread. Crop pots full of yummy soups and breads and treats for teachers just to kind of stay fueled up for that long Thursday of conferences. They treat us very well. And then, lastly, I just wanted to recognize the partnership that we have with Otter Tail Coaches, who provides our transportation. Last Wednesday was Bus Driver Appreciation Day, and we had several students that took the time to just write a note of appreciation and deliver to the bus drivers. And it's, it's a privilege for us to work directly with our bus company. They accommodate our needs. Sometimes, it's the morning of, but they just work to help all of our transportation needs go, go very smoothly. So, we're fortunate to have the partnership with them. And that's all I have prepared for tonight.
All right. Any questions for Principal Rund? Thank you. Thank you. And next, Ivanhurst Middle School Principal.
Good evening. On February eleventh, we had our second PBL training with Dr. Lori Elliott, very engaging speaker. And her experience really showed a lot of positive combat, comments back from staff. She provided us with the framework and ideas that could continue this initiative, which was really helpful, and really was able to answer individual questions that were kind of stumping some of us. So, she was very well-received. Spring parent-teacher conferences, we had ours. In our, in our fifth and sixth grade, we had eighty-six percent. They were both very close, so I kind of averaged them together. And then, our seventh and eighth grade was at fifty-four percent. And visiting with staff, probably a little bit lower in that seventh and eighth grade than we're used to. So, we might have to do a better job in the future of encouraging these parents to get signed up. Last month, I was letting you know that I was gonna attend the state conference for MASP. And we had two wonderful keynote presentations. Barudi Cafale was one of the speakers, and he talked about relationships with our students. And then, he really asked us to examine, why do we lead? And really good conversations at the social afterwards, so that was really nice. And we also had a speaker named Manny Scott. He talked about what is our priority each day. And then, he also talked about finding your flow, which is something that we're doing here as well. And so, that, that fit in really well. Went to some concurrent sessions about school-wide culture, reading, and a session that was focused on talking about race. This is really, time that was really well-spent for me professionally, personally. Saturday School has started, so we, we take our students in grades five through eight that have failed a quarter class in a core. And we invite them to come in on Saturday School to work on their deficiencies. We're more focused on seventh and eighth grade, but that, that started now. And what they don't finish on Saturdays, then we will continue that in summer school for them.
Do you provide meals that?
There's snack, cause it really only goes, if I remember now, eight-thirty in the morning to eleven. So, there's, there's some snack in there for them. Yep. As you likely know, Mr. Scott Cumberall brought the fifth graders on to the Minnesota Music Educators Conference and presented with them. They were really excited that morning. I didn't see when they got back, but I talked to them the next day. Really, a feather in our cap here at the school, at the district, for the great job that they did. And there was a really nice article in the, in the paper about them. So, congratulations. Thank you, Scott, for pursuing the opportunity, and for the fifth graders representing us really well. Last Friday, the seventh grade choir traveled to Wapton and the SCS for a choir festival. They had an opportunity to get instruction from other directors and see other choirs perform, so they could kind of get a little measuring stick about where they're at. So, that was really valuable. And the, and the eighth grade orchestra is going to St. Ben's this Friday. And then, kind of wrapping up, home speech meet today for the middle school. There's all kinds of kids. They're everywhere, and they're all dressed up. But this is a big deal for them. There are about fifteen schools here, and about a hundred and eighty students performing, and they're using the high school area. So, we're busy. Yeah. Any questions? Well, the advisors I did wanna mention, Jessica Anderson, Carrie Love, and Janelle Trosvik. So, appreciate their work with our, with our young people. And putting on, hosting the meet.
I have a question. Some parents have asked me in the past, and I just brought it up after hearing the other principals talk about their PTO program. Has there been any thought to bringing back PTO for middle school?
I haven't had, I haven't heard that yet, but I can check into it. Do you know if it, do you know if, is it run in this building? Has it run in this building in the past?
Yes.
Yeah.
But it's probably been a while. But if we're looking for ways to engage parents, that's probably a good one.
Agreed. I could spend some money, I have a couple ideas.
Well, and so, way back in the day, when my daughter was a middle schooler, they used to organize and check room the dances, middle school dances, where the kids would not dance with each other.
I remember those.
But I do think it was a highlight for those kids, so anyway, but, yeah.
And I think that was, what were, you had to have a certain grade, right? Or GPA?
No, I'm, I'm, or my daughter. But no, no, I think it was wide open. But it was just a way to get people and the kids in the building and engage a little more socially, and just open that aspect. But now, it seems like the PTO's are so kind of focused on generating money and, in some pretty slick ways, and then just enhancing the everyday school experience.
I'll check into that.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And Mark Anderson, High School, ALC and Cape Town Principal.
All right, good evening. We've had a busy, busy month. Our ninth and eleventh graders will next week take the Minnesota State Student Survey on Tuesday and Thursday. They'll do that in Study Hall. I'll be putting that together and sending it out to staff. They know what's coming. Gets great information back, because we're doing it in March. We should hopefully get some of it back before the school year's over with and maybe look at it and talk to some of our kids and some of the things they are responding to that we could be better at. Our snowball coordination was earlier in the month. Those activities went really well. The kids had a blast in the activity we had on Thursday. We did move the dance to March twenty-sixth. They weren't too happy about that, but with the numbers of COVID up, we did, I think we did the right thing, and things are starting to go down. So, we're gonna have a good time with that dance. Then, problem is not much longer after that when we get to have another dance here for the high school students. Our winter activities are about wrapping up. Our basketball and hockey teams are still participating. Obviously, our cross-country skiing team sent a student down to compete. Our summers are down there this week, competing. Hopefully, that, one of the basketball teams or hockey team might make it to the push to the state tournament, we'll see. And we have a busy, busy month of March for our music program. We have a number of concerts at night over the next two to three weeks, once we get going here. And then, obviously, the kids had the chance to go to Washington DC on their trip, so they're awful excited about that. They're selling stuff, they're selling food. A lot of pizzas came in last week for us to take home with us, so they're excited about that. I saw a lot of people carrying their bags with them when they left with the staff. As we talked about, Anton will be coming next week. He'll be speaking to the ALC and the high school. The high school will have him here from twelve-thirty to one-thirty in the Gold Gym. And then, he's gonna meet with our REACH students, nine through twelve, right after that down in the choir room. They're extremely excited to meet with him as individuals in a small group, a little bit different presentation than what he does up in the, in the gym. I'm excited to go down and listen to both areas with him. I have never gotten to see him, hear him speak, but I hear he's fantastic. So I'm excited to hear him present to our staff and to our students. High school registration has gone well. We have about forty kids left who have not yet turned in their registration sheet. And we keep bugging them every day, so we'll keep doing that until they turn their items in. One of the things we're seeing is we have some students who are asking to be in Reach. Our Reach numbers are going to be up, which is a great program. It does the right things for the right students. So our counselors are spending a lot of time right now going through, making sure kids didn't register for eighteen credits when they only should have done it for fourteen. And we're going to go through and check to see which kids would be the best fit for our Reach program. And our leadership team in our last meeting last week also talked about our scheduling process. Receiving their section numbers and then helping me plan out where courses should be and who's going to teach them and things like that. So we're kind of working on that piece. That will start really in depth in April. Our compost recycling began today. Our kids did a lot of work for us in that. They actually did a PSA with Cedar. And she presented, she did the, we sent that out today. And she was here to help us. Mr. Abrahamson and myself were down there helping kids dump their food in the right places. A lot of food prior to this was going into places that didn't need to go as candy school. And we saw a lot of stuff go into the right place today. And the food will go to the right places and abused the right way. So it didn't take the kids very long to figure it out. And they'll be just fine when we get going through the week. The ALC also celebrated their snowball. They also had their own king and queen. They also had the opportunity to do some things over there. They like to participate in some of the things we do, but they also like to have their own activities and processes over there. The ALC students are setting weekly goals in their advisories each week. And the values were one of the things they talked about this last week. The ALC did spend the last couple of weeks doing Advisory Olympics. It's been pretty cool. They compete against each other. Their advisory team, the ALC kids actually helped put their weekly schedule together for advisory. And they planned out these Advisory Olympics. They had dress-up days, music rock like a band t-shirt today. So went over there. It was pretty interesting to see what they were wearing on their t-shirts. They did Friday games and they did the activity, what is in your pocket? So they had those activities and fun things going in their classroom. They did celebrate Valentine's Day, which is no matter how old you are, you enjoy that. And again, yoga is a big hit over there. A lot of kids are signing up for that on Tuesdays and Wednesdays when they run it. And it's great to see and the kids enjoying that. Anton is speaking to them in the rec gymnasium next Thursday in the morning. So Kristen has them giving their presentation without the high school students being around also. They started their composting today too, and it went well. So they're excited about that over there also. And the IQ Academy, I had the opportunity to meet with the IQ Academy online. We did a Zoom. Mr. Johnson and I went through project-based learning. The presentation that we had, they didn't get, I'll come and see it, so they've watched it. I put out some information to the ALC staff and the high school staff and they didn't get it yet. So we were able to present kind of our expectations on a month-to-month basis as we finish this year up and how we want to implement it and do some curriculum writing as far as project-based and PLCs next year. They had some great discussions. Obviously, being online is a whole different ballgame than being in person. So they brought up really good questions. Their leadership team is going to spend some time digging deep into those things and figure out what project-based looks like. A lot of kids are online, have chosen sometimes to step out of school because they don't want to be around a lot of other people. So how they're going to do the project-based as a collaboration and things like that are things they're going to talk about. A lot of their kids like to do one-on-one projects or individual projects. A great idea came out where maybe the family could do the project-based learning as a family and then come back and present it to their classmates and that would be their community presentation. So they'll be working through their leadership team determining what that looks like and how it will be maybe a little bit different as far as how it looks, maybe sounds for the online piece versus what it would be if you were inside the school building. Each week, the staff is still rotating through their enrollment, working with new kids coming in. They're doing their SCL activities. And Mr. Johnson did spend his first three weeks up here working with students, not just here at the high school, but at IQ. When we start a new semester, he comes up and sits in our media center to make sure the kids that are here are getting their end of the courses, doing what they need to do, staying on track and not getting too far behind or not getting far behind at all, trying to eliminate those failures. So he spends a lot of time up here kind of chasing a few kids and trying to get them into the media center and make sure they're taking care of their business. And we have been communicating with Stride. We're looking for a little bit additional support and we've talked to Jeff about that in the past. We'd like to see them help support us with maybe a couple more people in the counseling area or onboarding kids right now. It's been kind of a struggle. So that's what I have for you guys this month. Any questions?
What is the enrollment for IQ Academy right now?
Seven-hundred-and-ninety-four kids.
Seven-ninety-four?
Yep.
Is it doing that ballooning exploding thing it usually does?
It's down a little bit at the elementary and sixth and eighth grade, but it's up at the high school. So we're right around the numbers we've had. But it's in that spot where we just started the semester. Then was it Houston Online, MBU, whatever. They stopped taking enrollment. We have it, so ones they won't take now will come to us and we'll gain a bunch of kids here pretty soon again.
I'm sorry, we closed enrollment on April first, aren't we?
Well, we, yes, we've talked about doing that this year, this semester because of all the lateness that they come in. And then you got to try to catch them up and they're already way behind. So we have talked about doing that. So that's still a month away, but it's thirty days after what the other schools do.
Conferences. Just a, yeah, it's a ballpark number, nine-twelve and what percentage of the parents participate.
Under ten percent.
Yeah. It's a, I mean, you know, fifth and sixth grade, eighty-six percent, seventh and eighth, fifty-four percent. And then it just drops off. And I know, I talked to one of the teachers, it's at IQ and she has, publicly speaking, I think there's twelve or fifteen students there. They had two of them signed up and only one of them showed up on the Zoom. So I don't know what the answer is to that. Is it just nature of the beast or is it, I don't know?
Yes, kind of to the high school, but there's some things we could do. We kind of talked about that a little bit today, about how we could set a calendar that maybe were a little different. Maybe our expectations of conferences would be a little different still, talking to parents. But maybe it looks different, it sounds different. We're doing more of a phone call kind of thing, but we've, kind of some things we got to talk about. We want to be able to get them in. So I'd like to get them in next year for registration with mom and dad and son and daughter here in the building so we can see them. So that really helps us with their career planning in the high school piece. That's winter. The fall ones aren't attended at a whole lot higher rate.
It'd be nice if we could get the parents engaged in the academics as much as they are in the sports world, maybe.
Yep.
Well, I've got a sixth, a seventh, and a freshman, so I've got all three. And it just, it just seems like with the younger grades, teachers make more of a big deal out of it. And they're a little more, it's a little more advertised, I guess.
In my experience at the secondary level, I'm a former elementary teacher. You're a hundred percent right. I would say at the high school level, this, what we have here is no different than what I've experienced in other places I've been. If you get to the high school, it becomes a struggle.
Because which teacher do you pick when you've got six teachers per day? And it might not be the one that you actually should be talking to or whatever, but yeah.
One, just real briefly, what's Anton Truer's claim to fame?
He is, he's an American Indian specialist. He teaches about the Ojibwe culture and language and really just kind of relates it back to today.
Okay. An award-winning author. He teaches at Bemidji State University. He's a professor there.
And that's March tenth?
March tenth, yes. We have stuff, you guys are coming over from Cleveland on the eleventh. And then I think Adams is coming over one of the days or he's going over to the elementary. So he's going to be busy March tenth and eleventh. He's going to do a lot of presentations.
And is it the teachers three-thirty to five or three, or forty-five on the tenth?
On the tenth.
Is that in the auditorium then?
They'll be in the auditorium.
That sounds great. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Superintendent Drake.
All right. Good evening. So I'm really happy to put this COVID-nineteen report up. We had very few cases last week. This is about the second week in a row where our numbers were way, way down. And then today we had zero cases in the district. So I'm, I'm at the point where I think I can say with some confidence that we have weathered the worst of it and have blue skies and green grass ahead. The CDC did recently revise some of its mitigation efforts. They are no longer requiring masks to be worn on public transportation. I don't know if the Minnesota Department of Health has adopted that quite yet. They usually lag behind the CDC by a week or two, but certainly we are under far less restrictions in terms of mitigation recommendations than we've been for a very long time. So all very, very positive news. I also just want to mention, Mrs. Ron mentioned it, but shout out to the bus drivers and Otter Tail Coaches. I think that this is accurate. I kind of caught it while I was getting ready for work one morning. But I believe on the news, they said we have had eleven blizzard mornings in this region this winter. And so that's, that's a lot of rough driving that our, that our drivers have experienced. And we've had our share of late starts or school cancellations. But I do appreciate the special care and attention that they provide in doing their job and making sure that our students arrive and get back home safely. Mr. Anderson also mentioned the upcoming concerts that we're going to have. March is a special month in schools for music. So we have the all-school band concert coming up on March seventh. The middle school orchestra concert on March eighth. And then the high school choir concert coming up on March fourteenth. And we have stellar music department and exceptionally talented music students here. So certainly extended invitation to the community to come and listen to our students perform. And last, I was going to play this two weeks ago, but I had a senior moment and so it didn't get done. But this is, we're familiar with this, but this will be hopefully of interest to our viewers.
The greatest joy of being in education is to watch students blossom before your very eyes. During these formative years, there are several things we believe are important. Core knowledge and a commitment to lifelong learning equips our students to meet the challenges of daily living and achieve personal satisfaction. This also prepares them to plan and navigate their personal path to a future career. Communication skills ensure that our students effectively work as a team, collaborating with others as successful members of society. Students of Fergus Falls Public Schools are taught to be present, focused, and actively engaged communicators. Approaching failure with an open mind, curiosity, and adaptability results in opportunity. Creative problem-solving is a skill that prepares our students to turn a frustrating situation into a learning and growing opportunity. Hey, many world-changing discoveries and inventions rose out of a long stream of failures. We believe that the character of an autore graduate is as important as their academic ability. Our students are encouraged to live life passionately while holding themselves to a high standard of personal integrity. We should approach life considering the thoughts and feelings of others while taking bold risks and blazing trails to impact our world for the better. Taking pride in ourselves, our school, our community, and our country, Fergus Falls Public Schools wants our students to respect and appreciate the freedoms we have as U.S. citizens. Students are reminded that they have a beautiful responsibility as agents of change, improving our community, state, and country. Through generous stewardship of their gifts and abilities, we can have a positive impact on the world around us. To witness our students develop confidence in their abilities, reach their potential, and travel on a path to attain their hopes and dreams, it's an exciting journey for our students. And to know we as educators play a part in that, it's a rewarding journey for all of us.
So I'm really pleased with how this promotional video has turned out. I think that it captures the spirit of the organization. I think it does a very nice job of highlighting what's important to us in terms of our values and the kind of experience that our students are going to have as they proceed through our educational here that we offer. So can't wait to unveil it further for the public to see and excited about the work ahead.
Is it closed caption? Is it accessible that way?
I'll have to reach out and see if that can be done, Missy. I'm not sure. So that's a good point.
I think if you just click the CC on there, it will come up.
I think so too. Right there.
Yep.
So when somebody opens it, they can?
I think they can. I could be wrong.
Yeah, we'll try it, but let's see if they come up to us.
The greatest joy of being in education is to watch students blossom before your very eyes. During these formative years, there are several things we believe are important.
Somebody's going to have to do it.
Core knowledge and a lifelong learning equips our students.
There you go.
We do have technology skills built into our plan, so we'll exercise some of those to get the closed captioning.
All right.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll continue on with the agenda, which next includes the general consent items. And for that, we'll consider approving the minutes from our Valentine's Day regular board meeting. And then to you, Elaine, for our support, or for our personnel moves.
Good evening, everyone. Just a few items here for board approval. Under support staff resignations, we have two special ed pairs, Michelle Lopez and Hildy Martenson. Under certified staff retirement, we have Gary Hoffbeck, social studies teacher. And he's been with us, I believe, thirty-two years. So huge change for Gary and for the school district. Later on, under new business, we will have a resolution for Gary. And then certified staff hire, we are starting to hire for next school year already. So Kimberly Link, special ed education teacher here at Kennedy. And she'll start at the beginning of the school year. And last, we have a three-year agreement, year twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-five, between the school district and the superintendent of schools, Jeffrey Drake. And so I would request approval from the board on all these items.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the general consent?
So.
All right. And second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion on any of the items? It's nice to see that Mr. Hoffbeck was highlighted in our little video.
Yeah, I saw that.
Any discussion at all? Hearing none, all of you over say aye.
Aye.
A follow-up say aye. And that is approved. Under new business, we have a resolution, the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two American Indian Parent Advisory Committee Resolution. This is in conjunction with the presentation we had from Mary Weaver at the beginning of the meeting. Whereas the Fergus Falls School District, number five-forty-four, is an AIPAC-composed, and that's A, well, that was the title, American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. Composed of parents, guardians, and American Indian children who are eligible for Indian education programs, American Indian language and culture teachers and paraprofessionals, American Indian teachers, American Indian counselors, American Indian adults enrolled in educational programming, and American Indian representatives from the community. Whereas the school district affords the AIPAC the necessary information and the opportunity to effectively express their views concerning all aspects of American Indian education and the educational needs of the American Indian children enrolled in the schools and programs. And whereas the AIPAC is directly involved with and advises the school board and school district staff on American Indian education program planning. And whereas the AIPAC develops and submits recommendations to the school board and the district staff pertaining to the needs of American Indian students. Therefore, be it resolved that the AIPAC concurs that the school board and the district are compliant with Minnesota Statute, Section one-two-four D point seven-eight, and that the school board and the district are meeting the needs of American Indian students. Will someone offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
I'll offer that resolution and move for its adoption.
All right. And is there a second?
A second.
And any discussion?
I think in their formality, it would have to be sent into education.
It's a bit slow.
Tomorrow, right?
Yes.
Tomorrow's that then?
Yep.
Okay, good.
We're right down to the deadline.
Yeah.
Last year, we received an extension, but this year we did not. So yes, it'll all be sent in tomorrow.
Good deal. Thank you.
There's quite a bit more paperwork involved this year. Yes.
Okay.
It's much more extensive.
And Missy, you're on that.
I do meet with them. I wasn't able to go to the meeting last week when Mary was tasked to do the presentation, but.
Yeah, well, thank you.
You too.
It's a great committee. It's a great committee, and it's important for our school district and the students.
And we receive that funded from the state for, for the program, so.
Well, and we should, because the, in this state, the graduation rates of Native American students is not where it should be.
Any other comments?
No.
All right, clerk, please take roll.
Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes? Stephen Vigasa?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. The next item of business is to propose and accept 2021 School District's calendar revision. You're to the snow day on February twenty-second, move students pre-hour early out on June, early-out day to June third, and then that will bump a staff development day to June sixth. Would someone make that motion?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion?
Can't we just be done?
Yeah.
Can't we just get everybody out and disinfect the entire, all the school buildings?
No more snow days, right?
I think we need a baker's dozen for blizzards this year. We're almost there.
Two more?
Two more.
Two more? All in favor of approving the revision, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Next, I'll seek momentous moment, motion to approve the 2022 Independent School District, five forty-four strategic plan. This is a plan that Superintendent Drake has brought forward and worked on diligently since his arrival.
I'll make that motion.
All right, thank you. And a second?
A second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? We'll have a little presentation about where the things are at during our work session, so. All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. That is approved.